Internet for one year of escolar, completely gratis. Para más información y para inscribirse hoy, llamen al 303-651-8386. Esperamos escucharos de ustedes.
Las reuniones de la Cámara de Cuidado están siendo llevadas a cabo remotamente debido a la orden de permanencia de la Virgen del estado que fue aplicada el 26 de marzo de 2020. La gente puede ver las reuniones en streaming en www.youtube.com/c/cityoflongmont/live o longmontpublicmedia.org/watch. Así que podemos empezar con el llamamiento de rueda?
Sí, el señor Bagley.
Aquí.
Los miembros de la Cámara de Cuidado, Cristensen.
Aquí.
Idago Ferring.
Ella está aquí.
Ella está aquí, está bien. Martin.
Estoy aquí.
Peck.
Aquí.
Rodríguez.
Aquí.
Y Waters.
Aquí.
Señor, usted tiene un coro.
Genial, vamos a estar ahí y decir el juramento.
juramento.
juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento. juramento.
2020, una sesión de estudio en orden. Las reuniones de la Cámara de Cuidado están siendo llevadas a cabo remotamente debido a la orden de permanencia de la Virgen del estado que fue aplicada el 26 de marzo de 2020. La gente puede ver las reuniones en streaming en www.youtube.com/c/cityoflongmont/live Así que podemos empezar con el llamamiento de rueda?
Sí, el señor Bagley.
Aquí.
Miembros de la Cámara de Cuidado, Cristensen.
Aquí.
Idago Ferring.
Ella está aquí.
Ella está aquí, está bien. Martin.
Estoy aquí.
Peck.
Aquí.
Rodríguez.
Aquí.
Y Waters.
Aquí.
Señor, usted tiene un coro.
Genial, vamos a estar ahí y decir el juramento.
Juramento de allegiance a la ley de Estados Unidos de América. A la república por la cual se estabelece una nación, bajo Dios, con libertad y justicia para todos.
Libertad y justicia para todos.
Bien, siempre golpeo sobre la bandera colorada, perdón, el señor. Bien, así que vamos adelante y pasemos a las motiones para dirigir al gerente de la ciudad a agregar elementos de agenda a las agendas futuras. ¿Alguien tiene algo? Dr. Waters.
Gracias, señor Bagley. No, no es una dirección a los personal, en realidad es una solicitud o una pregunta de miembros de la Cámara. Tengo una notificación por correo electrónico de un residente, parece ser un residente número uno, pero no es nada. Un hombre que está cumpliendo 100 años el sábado. Y no puede, no pueden celebrar su cumpleaños, así que la Asociación de los propietarios ha planeado una pequeña parada de autos para que vayan y honrarse. Él va a estar con su abuelita en la puerta de frente esperando. Y la gente va a ofrecer una especie de deseo de mejor cumpleaños, deseos de cumpleaños. Así que mi pregunta a los miembros de la Cámara y al señor es, ¿Sería capaz de alguno de ustedes estar dispuesto a unirse a esa expresión de deseos de cumpleaños para uno de nuestros centenarios cumpliendo 100 años el sábado? Así que hay dos formas en las que podríamos hacer esto. Probablemente la forma más fácil, mucha retroalimentación, probablemente la forma más fácil es que te pueda enviar una invitación Zoom y podría grabar cada uno de nosotros y luego enviar esos grabados a Longmont Public Media y ellos podrían juntar eso. Ellos van a juntar algo para reconocer a este hombre. O cada uno de nosotros podría video individualmente y enviarlo a ellos. Lo que sea lo que sea lo más fácil para ustedes todos, estoy feliz de hacer.
Miembro de la Cámara de Cuidado, Cristensen.
Creo que esto es...
Polly, todo el mundo asegúrese de que sus micrófonos estén en mute porque estamos escuchando el micrófono de alguien.
Sí, de todos modos, ¿puedes oírme? No puedo oírte, oh, bien.
Sí, podemos oírte.
No puedo oír a Brian, pero, Tim, creo que esta es una idea maravillosa. Sí, por favor, envíenos el Zoom o también podríamos ir por ahí, podríamos hacer ambos, ya sabes. Y cada día te vuelves 100, así que creo que esa es una idea maravillosa. Y tal vez haya otras personas que vuelven 100 también, así que sí, envíelo a mí.
Creo que sería divertido cada vez que alguien vuelve 100, la Cámara de Cuidado. Sí, así que lo que haré es enviarlo a Don y Don, puedes enviar la dirección y hay una pequeña ruta que están pidiendo que la gente conduzca para que no haya una atracción de tráfico en el vecindario. Y luego, si está bien, solo enviaré la invitación de una reunión o Zoom y averiguaré qué funciona en tus horarios y solo les deseo feliz cumpleaños y lo que sea más que quieran decir y luego enviaré eso y el PM puede juntarlo porque sé que van a recibir deseos de vecinos y otros miembros de la comunidad. Y sería divertido tener un conjunto de mensajes de miembros de la Cámara de Cuidado y del señor.
Así que, Tim.
¿Quién es eso? Miembro de la Cámara de Cuidado, Cristensen, adelante. Lo siento, Peck, adelante.
Perdón, ¿esto va a ser en el sitio de observador de Longmont?
No sé sobre el Observador, creo que va a ser en el sitio de la media pública de Longmont. Creo que van a ponerlo juntado.
¿Por qué? Así que aquí está mi preocupación sobre esto, es que, ¿están esperando, la gente va a decir, por qué hacemos esto solo para esta persona? O ¿qué harías? Estoy confundida con cómo esto va a funcionar en el futuro. ¿Podemos hacerlo genérico para todos los octogenarios o...?
Centenarios, ¿no son centenarios?
Sí.
Sí, no estaba haciendo una motion, pero mi respuesta a la pregunta, bueno, ¿por qué estamos haciendo esto ahora? Dije, tienes que empezar algún tiempo.
No, no.
Hay que empezar.
No, no era lo que era, ¿por qué lo hacemos ahora? Es, ¿estamos, solo vamos a hacerlo para este hombre? Y si la gente dice, ¿por qué lo haces para esta persona? ¿Podemos hacerlo genéricamente para todos los centenarios?
Bueno, ese no es probablemente mi llamado, pero creo que hace gran sentido. Yo me inscribiría para hacerlo para todos los que vuelvan 100 años en esta comunidad, tengan tiempo de hacerlo. Creo que sería divertido hacerlo.
¿Quieres decir uno genérico o cada uno individual uno?
Cada uno individual uno.
Oh, está bien.
Te enviaré el nombre de este hombre para que pueda tener su nombre y solo quería mencionarlo ahora, ya que estamos siendo grabados y en vivo, así que...
Miembro de la Cámara de Cuidado, Martin. Marcia, estás mutada. Marcia, no podemos oírte, estás mutada. ¿Puedes oírme?
Pensé que teníamos que estar mutadas, lo siento, puedo desmudarme yo misma, está bien. Estaba diciendo que la razón por la que esto se está haciendo de esta manera es debido a la orden de permanencia en casa. Así que no necesariamente tenemos que hacer esto en perpetuidad, pero probablemente deberíamos hacerlo cada vez que alguien vuelve 100 durante la orden de permanencia en casa porque no pueden tener su fiesta regular y esa es la razón por la que esto está sucediendo. Así que no nos comprometemos demasiado, es lo que estaba diciendo.
No veo a nadie más, supongo que estoy por esto y le pediría una invitación Zoom porque es lo más fácil y luego también comprometeré en conducir en el auto. Sin embargo, sospecho que algunas personas se cuestionarán y criticarán porque estamos dejando nuestros hogares para actividades no esenciales. En general, estamos en cuartel y socialmente distanciados, etc., etc. Así que mientras todos estén conscientes de que podríamos catchar un flaco, estoy por ello.
Te enviaré una invitación Zoom y luego la gente puede decidir ir por ahí o no, pero al menos podemos expresar nuestros deseos a este hombre.
Gracias por traer eso, está bien, la Cámara, ¿alguien más tiene algo? Bien, genial, entonces vamos adelante y podemos leer el público invitado a ser oído, parece que tenemos una lista corta.
Sí, señor, ¿puedes oírme? Así que el primer es de Kyle Spidel, The Green Solution, 4100 East Arkansas, en Denver, Colorado. Sus comentarios son, soy Kyle Spidel, uno de los propietarios de The Green Solution. Quiero agradecerle por trabajar con nosotros para avanzar los cambios de código de la ciudad prometidos por el paso del proyecto de la Cámara de la ley 191090. Como pueden saber, mi familia y yo construimos esta empresa desde la base. TGS es ahora uno de las compañías cannabis más grandes de Colorado con ocho instalaciones de cultivo, uno productor y 23 tiendas. Después del paso de la ley 191090, nuestra reputación y potencial de crecimiento atraen a algunas de las empresas públicamente comerciales top en Estados Unidos. Encontramos el correcto socio y hemos entrado en un acuerdo de compra con Columbia Care, una empresa de cannabis multiestadounidense. Mis hermanos y yo hemos supervisado las operaciones diarias de The Green Solution durante más de una década y continuaremos involucrados con la compañía después de la venta. Las operaciones diarias continuarán siendo de la mayor calibre, ya que Columbia Care traerá sus mejores prácticas para complementar las operaciones que han experimentado desde TGS en la ciudad de Longmont. Si tienen preguntas, por favor, por favor, contacten conmigo. Gracias de nuevo por trabajar con nosotros en la línea de tiempo para esta acción y a su personal por facilitar nuestra solicitud. El siguiente comentario, el señor, es de Stanley Toll, 2137 Dexter Drive, apartamento D. Sus comentarios son, la ciudad tiene un horrible problema con la discriminación de vivienda subsidizada entre los dueños locales. ¿Cuándo va a terminar la Cámara de Ciudad esta discriminación? Es casi imposible para las personas con subsidios de vivienda obtener vivienda al alquiler en la ciudad de Longmont. Esto es un problema de vida y muerte para muchas de estas personas, ¿va a ser responsable la Cámara de Ciudad por esto? El tercer comentario es de Tiffany Casanicki, 2238 Bluebird Drive, Longmont. Su comentario es, hola y gracias por tu tiempo. Queremos pedirle a la Cámara de Ciudad que considere reabrir los cursos de golf de Longmont. El golf es un deporte de distanciamiento social perfecto, con algunas restricciones, la distanciamiento social se puede mantener fácilmente mientras proporciona un outlet saludable para los residentes para salir y ejercicio. Hay numerosos ejemplos en Colorado y otros estados de cómo los cursos de golf operan durante la pandemia de COVID-19. Por ejemplo, requerir que los golfers paguen online o en el teléfono, hacer los cursos solo caminando y espaciar los tiempos de beber. El curso nacional de golf en Erie es un buen ejemplo. Según su sitio web, declaran lo siguiente, en concordancia con las regulaciones estatales, así como la permiso del Departamento de Salud de Boulder y el pueblo de Erie, los cursos están abiertos solo caminando bajo la sección tres de la orden estatal. Todas las áreas de práctica están cerradas para asegurar la distanciamiento social y para eliminar cualquier reunión. Los golfers deben tener un tiempo de beber y deben pagar online o por teléfono el día del juego. El café y el club están cerrados para eliminar cualquier contacto. Debido a la orden del gobernador, también hemos reducido el personal. Por favor, lleguen solo 10 minutos antes de su tiempo de beber y encuentren al starter en la hoja número uno. Los golfers no pueden reunirse al primer tiempo. Disculpen, respeten la línea de distanciamiento social pintada alrededor de la sala de starter. No nos darán tarjetas de resultados. Descarguen nuestra app que tiene una tarjeta de resultado digital para su uso. Todos los jugadores deben adherirse a las requisitos de distanciamiento social durante el juego. Disculpen y adheranse a esta política en todo momento y propiedad. La ciudad de Colorado Springs también abrió recientemente dos de sus cursos de golf con restricciones y ella proporciona un enlace a eso. Agradece la gravedad de la situación en la que estamos y estamos agradecidos por todo lo que se está haciendo para proteger al público. Gracias por considerar la posibilidad de que los cursos de golf de Longmont puedan operar seguros y proporcionar un outlet para los golfers de Longmont disfrutar del clima de primavera y ejercicio. Y eso fueron todos los comentarios que recibimos, señor.
Bien, genial, gracias, Don. Bien, entonces pasemos a los reportes especiales y presentaciones. Estamos todos interesados en escuchar el update de COVID-19 de Harold Dominguez, nuestro gerente de la ciudad.
En realidad, voy a turnarla a Dan para pasar primero los aspectos operativos y luego entraré con algunos otros comentarios. Está bien, supongo que eso significa que estoy arriba. ¿Puedes oírme bien? Está bien, bien, buenas tardes, señor Bagley, miembros de la Cámara, espero que tu y tus familias sean saludables y sigan así. Empecé con un poco de buena noticia, supongo. Mientras estamos llegando un poco más hacia este evento, los datos se están volviendo más disponibles y eso es algo bueno porque podemos seguir el progreso de algunas de las acciones que hemos estado tomando. Cuando escuchamos que CDPG hizo un trabajo muy bueno presentando algunos de los datos estatales ayer y han kind of broken in the things we've done into two phases. Phase uno de la distanciamiento social fue la escuela, los bars y los restaurantes en ese periodo de marzo 16, 17. Luego, la fase dos fue la orden de permanencia en casa el 26 de marzo. Así que estamos obteniendo suficiente información ahora que podemos empezar a ver los impactos de esa primera fase. Y en realidad se ve como que estamos teniendo un impacto, lo que la estatal estimando es que están viendo una reducción de 45 a 50% de contacto en general en la comunidad, lo que es bueno. Y localmente estamos empezando a ver un poco de una flattening en las hospitalizaciones en Boulder County. Así que tenemos suficiente información ahora que podemos realmente empezar a mirar los impactos localizados. Así que los últimos cuatro o cinco días estamos empezando a ver que la tasa de hospitalización se ha flattened un poco. Es un poco tarde para decir que va a durar, pero eso es algo bastante significativamente bueno para nosotros. Y luego en esa fase dos, la completa orden de permanencia en casa, esperamos empezar a ver el impacto de los datos en la semana siguiente y podemos empezar a evaluar si eso ha tenido el impacto que la estatal piensa que va a tener. Y eso es probablemente lo más grande que estamos tratando de buscar es qué porcentaje de reducción de contacto se ha hecho porque voy a explicar por qué es tan importante. Así que como mencioné antes, la fase uno probablemente haya tenido una reducción de 45 a 50% en el contacto en general. Lo que esperan es que la fase dos vaya a llevarnos a ese rango de 60 a 80% y hay una diferencia significativa entre 60% y 80%. Así que la reducción de 60% sigue siendo significativa y eso hace que ese punto de alto realmente se vaya a mediados de mayo, junio, mediados de junio, lo que es bueno porque significa que la curva está flattening un poco. Sin embargo, la infección total estatal, todavía dicen que va a estar en ese rango de 65,000, que es un montón y excederá las capacidades de los asientos de enfermería en mediados de mayo. Si llegamos a 80%, entonces el punto de alto va a ser tal vez donde estamos ahora mismo o al final de abril. El total estatal va a ser 2,400 versus 65,000 si estamos en 60% y nunca impactará la cantidad de asientos de enfermería que podemos proporcionar. Así que cuanto más cerca podemos llegar a ese rango de 80%, la mejor probabilidad que tenemos de mantener la capacidad hospitalaria a través de la estatal. Así que realmente te muestra cuán importante es que estamos tratando de convencer a la gente de obedecer a la orden del gobernador, cuán importante es para la gente quedarse en casa excepto por asuntos centrales, porque si podemos llegar más cerca a ese 70, 80%, ya sabes, estamos hablando de un impacto de magnitud. Y deberíamos poder comenzar a medir parte de ese dato en la próxima semana o dos para ver cuán cerca estamos llegando. Y luego si llegamos lo suficientemente cerca, a medida que llegamos al final de ese periodo de abril, mayo, entonces podemos empezar realmente a tomar decisiones sobre qué podemos hacer para empezar a reducir la cantidad de impacto que tenemos en la vida de la gente. Así que esos son todas las cosas realmente buenas que tenemos ahora como datos. En el nivel local, gráfico, para los hospitales, estamos en buena forma, quiero decir, los mensajes generales estamos en buena forma. Tenemos 22 personas que están en hospital con confirmados casos de COVID ahora mismo, lo que está bien dentro del valor que esos hospitales pueden manejar. Están empezando a ver algún impacto en el lado de la enfermería, pero como mencioné la semana pasada, los hospitales en Boulder County han realmente comprometido con plan y responder a esto juntos. Así que como condado, estamos en muy buena forma, todo el mundo está muy seguro de dónde estamos y están empezando realmente a planear qué va a ser la siguiente fase si la necesitamos. ¿Qué es, qué es la emergencia? ¿Necesitamos tener una alternativa de unidad de cuidado tipo que estás viendo en Denver con, ya sabes, el centro de convenciones que están abriendo allí? ¿Necesitamos eso? Y estamos juntando un plan para lo que podría verse. Y sé que había, hay algunos datos localmente también sobre más especificidad sobre dónde están los casos en el condado. Así que de los, aproximadamente 201 casos en Boulder County que están convertidos, confirmados o lo que llaman probable. Boulder tiene 83 y Longmont tiene 51, lo que esperarías, ya sabes, con el base de población. Pero la buena noticia, creo, para Longmont es si lo breakas en el tipo de por 100,000 población, ratio, Longmont está por debajo de Lafayette y Lewisville bastante significativamente. Sabes, Boulder fue, ¿era 77, Lafayette 75, Lewisville 72 y Longmont es muy baja de 53? Así que creo que realmente muestra que los ciudadanos de Longmont están realmente haciendo lo que estamos pidiendo que hagan por un gran porcentaje. Así que creo que eso es también una estadística bastante significativa que estamos viendo y podemos comenzar a medir eso a tiempo también. Lo segundo o el tipo de último cosa que quería hablar rápidamente fue PPE. Hablamos de esto casi todos los días, es lo que vamos a hacer para el equipo de protección personal para nuestro personal. Lo que podemos hacer para niveles más altos de medicina, para nuestros primeros respondientes, ya sabes, policía y fuego y también tenemos otros primeros respondientes en la comunidad también con crews de Public Works que están fuera de la comunidad que por razones de seguridad tienen que estar cerca. ¿Qué podemos hacer para proporcionar equipo de seguridad para ellos también? En realidad estamos en muy buena forma allí también, probablemente mejor que cuando fuimos la semana pasada, estamos empezando a conseguir algunos lugares donde podemos comprar. No estamos fuera de los bosques por ninguna medida, pero creo que estamos un poco mejor que cuando estábamos. Lo mayor que estamos tratando de averiguar ahora es el impacto de, el gobernador ha pedido que todos usemos máscaras de algodón en público y estamos pidiendo que todo nuestro personal haga eso. Y estamos tratando de encontrar formas en las que podemos suministrar esos a la publica, no a la publica, a nuestro personal cuando están en la publica. Y estamos tratando de averiguar qué es la cadena de suministro para eso. Vamos a estar juntando un disco PPE que vamos a pedir al público que los deje si quieren hacerlos, si pueden encontrarlos para comprar. Creo que los detalles de eso vendrán pronto. Así que vamos a tratar de averiguar una forma en la que podemos proporcionar esos a todos nuestros personal que los necesita. Creo que ese es el gran update ahora mismo, creo que los pasos que hay son los datos empezando a venir a nivel local que podemos medir lo que estamos haciendo y creo que está empezando a tender una dirección correcta. PPE es todavía un poco de desafío, pero estamos trabajando por ello todos los días. Estaría feliz de tomar cualquier pregunta, a menos que Harold, ¿quieres ir a la segunda parte antes de que lo hagamos?
Vamos a tomar algunas preguntas. Miembro de la Cámara de Cuidado, Cristensen. Estás mutado, Polly.
Oh.
Diga de nuevo.
Estaría feliz de esperar a hacerle preguntas a Dan hasta después de que Harold hable, si eso es mejor.
Creo que es mejor tomarlo ahora en el dato y que ambos podamos entrar, necesitamos.
Está bien, ya sabes, hay muchas personas que están haciendo máscaras home made. Mucha de esto se centra en los ocultos en 23rd y Main y la gente está muy dispuesta a ser ayudada, a ser útil y muchos de nosotros estamos, tenemos mucho tiempo en nuestras manos. Así que tan pronto como usteda conoce quién usarlos, por favor, déjennos saber y por favor, contacte Hidden Treasures en 23rd y Main. Tienen un grupo completo de personas organizadas que están haciendo esto todo el tiempo. De segundo lugar, Dan, he oído que el condado de Weld donde no creen en ningún tipo de distanciamiento social aparentemente es ahora el epicentro de casos en la estatal. ¿Es eso verdad? Y también anoche el gobernador dijo que no ha venido a Colorado una sola ventiladora desde el gobierno federal, ¿sigue siendo eso?
Bueno, en el, así que trataré de tomar todas esas preguntas. En el lado de los ocultos, hemos estado en contacto con ellos y obtendremos los detalles para todos ustedes tan pronto como lo enviamos. Estamos buscando este sábado, pero obtendremos los detalles para ustedes tan pronto como los tengamos. Así que gracias por eso. Para el condado de Weld, ciertamente tienen muchos más casos que nosotros. La última vez que revisé, estaban en los bajos 500. Supongo que Harold puede saltar a ese sitio web allá rápido y darnos los números actualizados, pero estaban en ese bajo 537. Allí vas, 537, así que son significativamente más altos que nosotros. El impacto que eso tiene para nosotros es, ya sabes, uno de nuestros hospitales se encuentra, ya sabes, en la frontera oriental de nuestra comunidad y definitivamente sienten el impacto de la condado de Weld. Así que experimentamos eso un poco y probablemente continuarán haciendo así a medida que se quedan un poco detrás de nosotros.
Hey, Dan.
Sí.
¿Puedo compartir mi pantalla con ese norte? El norte central de los riesgos, ¿puedo compartir ese pantalla?
Sí.
Solo para la Cámara, esto es uno de los cosas, uno de los herramientas que tenemos para mirar y así, déjame...
Harold, puede que tenga que ser tu presentador.
Oh, no, es mi.
Ahí tienes. Sí.
Así que eso es en realidad venido de, sí, básicamente toman eso del sitio de Johns Hopkins y es un tipo de visual dashboard de los casos actuales. Pero sobre la pregunta del ventilador, en realidad no sé la respuesta a eso, lo disculpo, pero puedo ciertamente profundizar en eso, así que no sé por seguro ahora mismo, pero lo veré.
Gracias, Dan, lo aprecio.
Solo quería asegurarme que escuché, así que estamos haciendo un disco PPE. Eso es genial, pero también escuché que hay en Colorado un total de 22 hospitales con pacientes, enfermería... ICU, ICU, ICUs have beds, right? We're currently not under, so far so good, right?
The so far so good part is, is correct. The, what I was trying to say is in Longmont, we have twenty-two COVID positive patients in our hospitals.
Got it. And then do we know how many of those are serious? I mean, I mean, like the condition's serious, not.
In, in ICU, I believe the last time I checked, there were six that were in ICU.
And do we know if those are stable, serious or other?
I don't know.
All right. All right, cool. And then, awesome. Then how many beds total available in Longmont ICU beds?
That I can check too real fast. Okay.
So, so while he's doing that, I think the thing that we've seen in this is depending on what's happening in the world, I think yesterday we saw a bit of a surge in, in one facility and it's managing different issues. And so that is something that in, in watching that conversation that it, it does vary a little bit daily. Well, Dan's going over that or he's looking for those numbers. I wanted to touch base on a couple of things with you all. We talked a little bit about business assistance last week. Wanted to let council know where we, we are today. So they, they built what we're now calling the intake form. And all of the economic development partners have gone out and they've reached out to ten to fifteen different businesses that represent the community, both geographically and in various aspects demographically. And they're working them through this intake form. And really what it's designed to do is to see whether or not they've reached out in some of the existing federal programs that are via the SBDC. If they were, were they successful? If they were successful, what did they receive? And, and that's still being processed because we all know that that system's had its challenges. In addition to that, if they weren't successful, we also want to know why that occurred or if they chose not to apply. In addition, we're also really trying to get at what are the short-term needs and the long-term needs that these businesses are projecting in the future. And what we're really trying to do is design something that'll allow us to collect data to really see what the needs are in the community right now. Because as you know, based on what action you took last week, what Kimberly has from the DDA and what we had in existing grant sources, we only have about a hundred and eighty thousand right now collectively. And so what we're trying to understand is what do we need to do? And, and what makes the most sense? And really target that so we can have the most impact with the dollars that we have. Joni is going to get briefed on that tomorrow and we'll have more clarity and then we can move to the next step. I know that those that have had those conversations, they have got some really good information and part of what we're going to have to evaluate is, is it something that folks can fill out or do we have to have a version of a call center to try to help folks understand that? And we'll get more clarity tomorrow on, on that piece of the business assistance side. You know, generally we're hearing that, you know, probably five thousand or below is probably not what folks need, but we really want to verify that with data. We're reluctant to just throw money out that may not really help the businesses that we need. And we want to make sure that we're really focused and we're getting at the issues that we need to get at for the long-term viability of these businesses. In addition, as I mentioned, there's two components. There's business assistance and individual assistance. We did receive the letter from HUD regarding allocation that we will get, at least in this first round, being an entitlement community. And that allocation is going to be about three hundred and fifty-nine thousand. If council will remember when we talked about the split between business assistance and individual assistance, we talked about that being needing to be probably in the sixty-ish percent range on the individual assistance because of the low mod income requirements that you have associated with that. So we have that, they've given us our guidance. We're going to take the direction that you all gave us last week in terms of the general parameters for business and individual assistance and then get that plan together and put it out for public comment. But I wanted to let you know that we are seeing some of this start to come through. One of the things that we want to do on both of them, but really primarily on the business assistance side is understand what challenges people are facing. And as they roll programs out, we want to be able to batch people with those programs very quickly. Because one of the things is they all have nuances and details to those programs. And, and as we've seen in the SBDC rollout, they change those rules pretty quickly. I think last night I heard they released new guidance late last night on some of those programs. And, and so they're dealing with that. I know that a number of banks have indicated they can't take any more applications. And there's some liquidity questions regarding how is the federal government going to put money into those accounts? And so they're still working through a lot of things, but we have folks that are trying to stay on top of it. I know, you know, I had a long conversation with Jessica and Tony today in trying to bring all this together, but I did want to let you know we're continuing to move in that process. At this point, I can answer any questions on that.
Councilmember Christensen?
Okay, now I'm unmuted. Thank you, Harold. I was talking today with, well, I've been talking in the last couple of weeks with two, two of my neighbors and friends who are really excellent craftsmen, one of whom has five or six employees. And he wants to keep them on, but you know, it's very difficult. So, and he's been trying to fill out the forms with a notoriously bad bank, which will go unnamed. But, so he's, he's getting nowhere with that. But he does, he does have another account with a local bank and he's had much better luck with them. They've got right on it. However, I, I would like to know who in the city, I said you could try to check with Chamber of Commerce as well as Longmont Economic Development Partnership to see if they could help you get somewhere with this. Who, who would you advise me to have these small business people talk to in the city?
In terms of?
For, for help getting these forms processed and moved along because they are not really the easiest forms in the world to do, as you, as you know. Where can they turn for help in answering questions?
In terms of the programs that are already out there, we're really pushing to the SBDC. I know they have an existing phone bank for folks to call and ask questions and work through those issues. And I say that because these are small business development loans that are processed. And so the programs today, that's where we're pointing everyone to. And we can get Joni to send that information out to council. Again, if you actually go into our website and there's a button at the top and you go business assistance, it actually takes you into what we, what we're calling the hub. And they can find all of that information where they need to go to in those programs. But that would be the SBDC on these programs.
Okay, thank you, Harold. Let them know tomorrow.
Ju- just to add to, Harold, so just having gone through this process myself, the, I really, really appreciate everything Jessica's doing, Harold's doing, Chambers doing, Longmont Economic Development Partnership's doing. The one thing I found, you cannot apply for a loan unless, unless you have an account at a bank as of February fifteenth of this year. So a lot of these people are calling, looking online, filling out applications. The end of the day, if you do not have a banking relationship with a bank as of February fifteenth, you really, really are having a hard time getting, getting assistance. The other thing is you have to be really, really careful what assistance you apply for because you can only apply for one. And so if there's one, one is a loan that you cannot get forgiven, that's zero percent interest. But the other one, if you're a small business and have payroll, you want to be focusing on the PPP loan. And the, the, you, you have to apply through your bank. So sooner or later, even if you go online, talk to the LEDP, talk to the small business folks, you have to go to your banker. And right now it's like a, i- i- there's a bottleneck. Everybody's trying to apply and most banks only have one loan officer trying to process dozens and dozens and hundreds and hundreds of loans. So, and there's a checklist. You'll need to fill out an application, an addendum, get payroll information. It's worth it. Because what happens is so long as you do not fire your staff, as so far as you commit to keeping them on board at their salaries, they will, they will provide a forgivable loan. In other words, they will give you up to a hundred thousand dollars per employee. You just have to show what your average payroll is for the last twelve months. They will provide you that loan amount, which is substantial. And as long as you use it for payroll, they will forgive it. Seventy percent payroll, they will also forgive you utilities, rent. It's, it's a huge lifeline. But if you do not work with your banker, you are wasting your time. So you have to get your banker's attention. Joan?
So Mayor Bagley, correct me if I'm wrong, but your bank also has to be a bank that does business with SBA. Is that correct? Because not every bank, not every bank, even though you bank there, does SBA loans.
Correct. And so the, the whole, the, 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 the funnel for getting the money is the bank. So a lot of the banks, it's their decision to loan more or less, but they're the ones lending the money. And my understanding is the feds are, are just using this process. But yeah, they have to have some type of SBA or federal.
Right.
So.
And, and I think there's.
I learned this the hard way. I spent a lot of time searching and then finally you have to find your banker that, that has that relationship, Joan.
Right.
And that's really the key is we can send you to the SBDC and they can answer questions. But at the end of the day, it's bank. And, and you know, I know that they're still evaluating this program. As I said earlier, they've been making changes to, to this program. And so we'll, you know, we're continuing to try to monitor that as a group and we can let folks know what's, what's really the current situation on this. The other reason when we, when we look at this intake and how we design the programs, there is some discretionary money that we saw in the HUD allocation. And so I've sent some notes to Kathy and Karen and Sandy. And we want to talk about these. And as I indicated to the mayor yesterday, we're going to probably want, once we can identify what really works best in that world, we're going to want to get some talking points to council so they can reach out to the Colorado delegation in different forms to see if we can move some of those discretionary components through that process. It's not clear what that process is, so we're going to go start building. So once it becomes clear, we can move in pretty quickly.
I'm, I'm going to regret saying this. But so my, my law firm is currently in hibernation for the most part, right? I got some time on my hands. I've gone through that loan process. So let people know to call me. And even if their banker's like, I just, I got three dozen before you. I can help people, tell them what to get together. I've got copies of the application, the addendums, the checklists. I can tell them what to get from their payroll departments. I know that process. So if people need help, I'm more than willing to, to talk to them and send them the forms and play, play banking. I can bank without a license and then they can get it together and then forward it onto their bank. I promise, Paulie. All right, Councilmember Peck.
That's a great, thank you, Mayor Bagley. That's a great offer. Would you be willing to do Zoom meetings as well with them?
Sure.
Okay. Perfect.
All right, anything else, Dan, Harold?
Are there any other questions for, from us?
Just waiting for that, Dan, do you have that information? And then Marsha Martin, you're, you're up.
I do, I do, Mayor Bagley. So here's a couple more pieces of information for you. So Longmont, we've got forty-three total ventilators. Twelve of them are currently in use. There's some good capacity there. There's still nine ICU beds available and there's sixty-nine other beds still available.
All right, cool. Thank you.
You bet.
Bad, bad news for those who are ventilated, good news for those who are about to be ventilated. So, Councilmember Martin?
Yes, Matt, thank you, Mayor Bagley. I was just wondering about this and maybe some, certain small businesses around town did not choose their bank before February with their relationship with the SBA in mind. Does that mean that their application is either out of the question or else will be delayed? Or do they have an opportunity to, to bring in a more appropriately qualified bank into the picture?
So I, I'm, I'm only speaking with about eighty percent sure. Experience. So I bank with, I've got four banks. And when I couldn't reach my primary banker, I then started calling other banks. And the other banks, those that I did not have a relationship with, they said I was out of luck. They could not do anything, primarily because the program requires that pre-existing relationship. And also, even if it did exist, they're just too busy with their clients. And so it, I was told by multiple bankers that unless you have that pre-existing relationship, you do not qualify. And I think, I think the whole point is to make sure that people are not, you know, fraudulently applying for loans. They wanted to make sure that you were in business and that you were, I mean, getting two trillion dollars plus quickly to small business owners to be able to pay their payroll. I can only imagine the curve. So I think that was just a safeguard. So potentially, I, yeah, Harold?
I just got some information almost right before we went in. I know that our economic partners are talking to different banks to see. I think there's some that are based on some new guidance that maybe looking at different components of this. But at this point, we can't say for sure, but I know there are some trying to figure out how they can approach it with customer, with individuals who aren't their customer. And hopefully we can have an answer to that in the near future. But I, at this point, the mayor's correct. You have to have that pre-existing relationship. And if we can get any more information out, we will definitely pass that out to the community and council.
Okay, thank you, Harold.
Hold on one sec. Oh, sorry, Marsha, you're right.
Sorry. I got a follow-up question, sorry. Is, is there, are we considering any kind of, of support mechanism to help those tedious businesses that may not have the, the right kind of a banking relationship until they can get that rectified, just so that they don't disqualify themselves by being forced to lay people off?
Say that again, you crackled on me.
I, I got it.
Good.
Okay.
So that's part of what we're trying to find out in terms of the information that we're receiving right now to really understand what people need. Because at this point, when you don't have, when you have about a hundred and ninety thousand, you really have to evaluate what will work because and, and whether or not it's going to be beneficial. And that's what we're trying to understand right now, really get into that question.
All right, Paulie?
I think Eric raised his hand too.
I'm sorry, it's getting dark in this room. Okay, I, I had a question for Harold or for you, Mayor Bagley, and I appreciate what you offered to help with. Does this, are credit unions included in this? I believe they make small business loans, number one. And secondly, about forty percent of the millennials are involved in the gig economy, which means they really don't have an employer. They're self, they're self-employed or there's independent contractors. What help is there for independent contractors? They obviously aren't able to get any help because they don't have a payroll. But they, they would potentially be able to apply for the zero interest loan. Is that correct or not?
Well, yeah, so like, for example, I've got, I've got a couple of con, people I contract with to provide services. They applied for that other loan, the zero percent. So the, and the whole, the whole point of this is not. So um, the, and the whole, the whole point of this is not to give small businesses a bunch of money. The whole, I mean, the whole point is to, yeah, get, get, pass it on to the employees uh for 2.5 months. That's the idea. So um, and then Mayor Protim Rodriguez?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Bagley. This is a slightly different topic, but I've been getting a lot of concerns from constituents that uh are worried about enforcement of the stay-at-home order as far as non-essential businesses, as well as some other issues that they may see. I generally tend to direct them to the county. And I believe that information has been pushed out that is consistent with uh having them report to the county any concerns they have. What kind of enforcement are we seeing from our, our local law enforcement in conjunction with concerns brought to the county?
So I'm going to let Dan jump in too. So, so generally there's two ways that information can pour in. Um, one, if, if it's more of an immediate issue. So for example, if you see 50 people gathering, that is a different event and that goes into our dispatch. And then we, we send officer, if it's an immediate threat kind of issue. If it's more in the business line, that that goes into uh the Boulder County Health Department. They then reach out to those businesses, communicate with those businesses. And, and then, you know, hopefully try to get compliance. If they can't, then that's when then they move it back into the law enforcement realm to then have those conversations. Um, it's, it's interesting because each business has um a different perspective. I mean, you have different parameters on this, and so they really have to work through those individual issues. Uh, Dan, did I get that?
Yeah, you did. I think the, on the, specifically on the law enforcement side, Chief Butler's been pretty clear with his direction on how we want to handle these things, which is really through education. Um, and there've been few of the issues on um kind of the community side, and they've all been resolved with um either a phone call or um a discussion from an officer. On the business side, that really is a, a public health component that they have taken. And their enforcement is a little different. They typically do have a phone call and if they need to, they'll follow up with an enforcement letter and they'll do the enforcement through the county attorney's office or that kind of mechanism. And they're continuing to kind of beef up their staffing on that, and it seems to be working fairly well. But like, like Harold mentioned, there's two paths. If, if people have a, a business concern that some, they feel business is not in compliance, that's directed to the call center. If they feel that there is a non-compliance with the stay-at-home order, that's directed more at um a member of the community, those, those calls typically go to our, our dispatch center and they, they handle them.
Well, thank you very much. I'll continue to relay this information to people as I get those questions.
I think the other thing that would help us too is we do run into areas that um we actually have to have a fair amount of conversation with the, the health department and then potentially other agencies. I know council received a number of calls regarding airports. And so we had to actually deal with both the county health department, but then we also had to deal with FAA because they sent some guidance out and it led to a lot of back and forth between those two agencies. And we're just now starting to get clarity on some of those issues. So um, when you have these different layers that have different oversight functions, um, it, it's not as simple as it may seem at times because you get into the word that we're all used to in preemption and we then have to work through those specific items.
All right, you done, Aaron? All right. Councilmember Martin?
Sorry about that. Um, well, now two questions. Uh, one's just a request. Could, uh, Harold, could you have David Slater uh send out the clarity when it's solidified? Because those questions are bound to come around again after this meeting, um, because it was mentioned. And my, my original question is, uh, I have gotten a couple of reports um from people who live in apartment complexes where there are big parties being held, no social distancing being observed. Uh, and uh, they're uh, in one place, I guess, an, an officer came out and everybody went back to their apartments and stopped partying until he was gone and then they all gathered again. Um, so um, I'm, I'm again wondering what advice to give people. I gave both of them the advice that they should call when that happens and that it's necessary sometimes to keep calling uh because maybe the enforcement pattern needs to shift, but they won't know that if they don't get all the calls. Is that correct?
Uh, that's correct. And then what I would say is if you know of those locations, if you can shoot an email to um me, Dan, Joni and Sandy, that way we can make sure it gets pushed in to the appropriate locations, um, to the appropriate department. So we know those locations. But you're correct. And then, you know, part of what we're also trying to manage is we also have our normal call load where we're taking those calls based on seriousness of the event that's actually happening at that time. So, you know, um, back to an, an answer, questions probably going to come out of this. We're not seeing, at least at this point, a significant change in, in our numbers when we compare them against the previous year, which means we still have that activity that's occurring that we then have to fold in with this activity. So yes, call. And then if we can get that information, we can definitely um push that into the um commanders and, and that group so they're aware of it.
Okay, thank you. And I guess there's a, a, a question about how the severity of this kind of non-social distancing events uh compares to other kind of events now that we have the, the additional risk. Um, and I will get you the name of the apartment complexes that have been reported to me.
I, I think it depends on what's going on at that time. Is it, is it is the, um, you know, some fairly significant, I mean, normal issues that we see on a daily basis. And it really depends what's happening at that time versus this activity and what's the call load. So if you had a large wreck, that's obviously going to be a different situation for that point in time.
Right. Well, it's, yeah, it's a question of is a, a normal drunk and noisy party usually isn't a very bad issue, but it might be a worse issue today than it was last year.
Correct. And they, and they're approaching it that way. It's really, really, I guess what I'm trying to say, it's related to the other activities that are actually happening at that given time. That they're managing their call volume. And then Jamie and David are working on a response to the FAA Health Department questions and we will send that out to everyone once we, once we complete it. That started hitting midday today.
Thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Dogal Ferring, and then Joan, you're, you're up next.
So um, what are the consequences for people who repeatedly, um, you know, if they're called, being called out to people who have um violated the stay-at-home order or the social distancing? If they've come out more than what is the, um, what's the consequence? What, and what?
Jump in and help me with that. I know you've been in those conversations.
Yeah, I can, I can give it a try. Um, Eugene may have to on this one too. Um, there's, there's actually, there's a, there's a criminal penalty attached to it and there's also a civil route that you can go. Um, there is, there is a summons that can be issued for, for a violation of a public health order. Uh, we haven't, we haven't done that yet. And there's also a, a civil avenue of enforcement that the public health would typically go down, I think for um a business violation. So I think uh if we went down the road of repeated violations for um something like in a, you know, an apartment complex party, I, I suppose we could go down the route of the summons. But you know, we're going to try everything we possibly can to avoid that through, you know, education and, you know, community policing kind of things before we got there. But there is a, an avenue for, for enforcement in that, in that way.
Um, yeah, one, a suggestion that came to me from a constituent, and I thought it was brilliant, was for people who are in violation of that um public safety order to maybe do a um, like have to do an online class on COVID and the safety measures and why. I mean, you, the map that Harold showed us in, in what's happening in Boulder County in comparison to what's happening to communities that aren't following these safety precautions, there's a huge difference. So we're seeing now data that supports following these safety measures. So maybe that would be if they have to complete an online course and prove that they've done those hours or that time to kind of make up the difference. I don't know if there's, um, my battery's running low. Um, I, you know, just a possibility like that to kind of help get the education out there as well.
Sure.
Yeah, we didn't have to talk to the judge.
Yeah, Eugene.
So Mayor and Council Eugene May, City Attorney here. So there are uh for violation of the public health order, fine up to a thousand dollars. Div order, um, having the judicial branch order that business close and then that uh judicial order would be enforced by uh local law enforcement.
I think the, um, the other answer too is, and, and we're, we're broad and vague when we give these answers, but I think that's because each individual situation has its own particular nuances to it. And that then starts sending down different paths based on what we're actually dealing with at that point in time. Uh, and, and so they do have all these processes and, and they're, they, and, and our, our department understands that these processes are there and they're moving through just steps as they get there um in order to take the most appropriate action. Um, we've all seen other things that have been on the news um that are, you know, that have created other challenges on, on the excessive side of this. And so what we're trying to do is balance both of the issues as we're moving forward.
Is there one more question and then I'm done. Um, so is there any kind of, I think about like when OSHA, we have to, in our place of business, we have to put all the safety precautions posted. Is there any way that we can communicate with um business or with um apartment complexes to have them post something in their community center or in their um area where residents can see, these are, you know, what stay-at-home means. This is, you know, practicing social distance. Have those things in place so people could see that. Because I'm also hearing, there's a little bit of confusion. Well, can we go out with our masks? Or can we, do we have to always go out and with our masks? And so it kind of goes back and forth. It seems like there might be some confusion. I'm trying to give people the benefit of the doubt.
Um, so yes, there's confusion. I mean, they're still getting a fair amount of calls into the call line regarding specifics. Uh, B, we will push this into two venues in terms of the posting piece. One, we will push this into the Boulder County Health Department so they can be aware of this issue. Uh, and two, we will also, um, we have our landlord group that's really managed by Susan and Carmen and our neighborhood services group. And so we'll chat with them as well on this issue. But we'll, we'll take both venues and then we'll figure out the best course of action. And this is good information. I have not, I mean, we haven't heard about it or I haven't personally heard about it. So I mean, this is a good input into us so we can start tracking these issues.
I don't see, I guess, I guess just to chime in, the uh, somebody mentioned one of the consequences. Just to provide my traditional, you know, unappreciated counterpoint. Um, the uh, uh, some of the consequences can be severe for the city. You know, there was a gentleman who is currently arrested over in Brighton. City backtracked almost immediately. Very real threat from a medical perspective. He still have, you know, rights. And so um, uh, I would, I would just, I'd, I'd like to remind city staff, I have no concerns with our, our, our police and our staff, but um it's still uh become an issue. Um, I get frequent calls throughout the day on all kinds of topic, uh, all kinds of topics. Um, one of the topics is I'm scared because uh my neighbors are not practicing social distancing. Um, that they'll point out picnics, they'll point out gatherings. Um, and they'll want to know, like you guys are hearing, well, who do I call? And uh, a lot of times, um, I mean, uh, there are people that all live together um within the same bubble. You know, six feet away from my three boys or six feet away from my three boys when we're always together, doesn't really matter. Um, and then uh, and the other thing is when you see someone, I mean, I've, I've talked in, to a lot of people who are going literally nuts. Um, they're, they're not dealing well with this well. They're in social isolation. They live by themselves. One woman called from Denver, screamed at me about the blue wave that's coming and about 30 seconds after that, um, she started crying and talking to me about how she was lonely and didn't know what to do. And uh, I don't know why she called me, but I always assume when I see people out and about that they're not rebels. A lot of people are just dealing with some type of isolation and mental illness that it comes down to do something or else do something worse. So um, uh, uh, this whole situation just is, is uh unfortunate, but we'll get through it. So Harold, the, any advice, anything you guys can do, uh, it's much appreciated. Just let us know. Okay?
Yep, we'll do that.
All right. So let's move on. Anybody else? Councilmember Pack?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I just want to uh, Harold, you had mentioned that there are two buckets to this uh CARES Act. One of them is business, the other is individual. Could you highlight just uh briefly, who is the contact person for the individual renters? People who uh can't make their monthly mortgage, um, evictions, et cetera?
So let me pull, pull up, um, we have different contacts for that.
There's not one point, one point contact?
No, because you have different issues. And so um, if you, I'm going to take you all. I'm going to share my screen again. Um, and we're in the process of revamping this.
Okay.
Just, I know they're constantly working on this website. I'm going to share my screen, but if you go here, I'm going to drop it down. Um, I've got a window on mine, so I've got to move it. So um, how, how to get help? So if you go here on the website, um, we have Boulder County Resources that we're, we're collectively involved in that in terms of work. So if you have access to food, you know, we point out our center meals on wheels. You can see the list, programs for seniors, you have that, individuals experiencing homelessness, income assistance, um, resources for renters and homes. Um, and so you can see that information and, and where we have folks call. And then housing retention, um, and, and where they can link in and, and find that information. Generally, if we can bring that into our, um, what I, I generally say is Kathy, Karen, Carmen in that group.
Okay.
Then we can start pointing into the appropriate direction and where folks need to go. And, and again, it's general, but again, each individual has their own circumstances that they're dealing with. And as you can see, there's many different venues where we bring folks um and, and point them to the appropriate location. Um, today.
Okay, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Is that a website, uh, longmont.org slash COVID-19? Is that the website?
Yeah. So if you, if you go in, I'll just walk you, I'll walk everyone through this right now since it's on screen. If you go to the city's site.
Okay.
And you can click on this, on this.
You're saying this.
It'll take you into to that location. The coronavirus image or the link on the left.
Okay.
And I've got a lot of people streaming in my household right now, so it is wearing my router out. So you can see up here at the top, how to get help. How can I help?
Okay.
Um, access to city services and resources, finding business resources. Um, access to city services and resources, finding business resources. And go in there and that points everyone to the appropriate location. Um, what I'll tell council is this website is constantly evolving as new things are developing. Um, and where, and where I went to is the how to get help.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else? All right. This next one is actually, I rarely put something on the agenda, but, uh, this is something I put on, uh, study session, item five, eight, Marshall, are we all doing okay? We need to take a quick break. We've only been going for an hour. All right. So this is, I was contacted, uh, by a group that was basically asking us to keep in mind or change some, some issues about, uh, uh, you know, who can own marijuana dispensaries. So, um, that's why it's here. And, uh, Harold, you have a presentation on this?
So it's Dawn, Eugene and, uh, Tim.
Hey, Mayor. We don't actually have a, uh, presentation. We put the council communication together, just a few points to review. First, can you hear me? Okay?
Yeah, we can hear you just fine, Dawn.
Good. Okay. So Tim Hall has joined me, Dawn Quintana, City Clerk, and then, uh, Tim Hall from the City Attorney's Office is also on the call. Um, so these code changes that we're bringing forth tonight really are, um, some updates and some cleanup while we're there, um, as well as the requested changes to allow for publicly traded companies. Um, y'all remember in 2018, we lifted the ban. Longmont now has four operators, um, operating marijuana retail stores. Um, the Green Solution was the last of the four to open because their location had some challenges with regard to floodplain and building issues. Uh, so they opened in late 2019, uh, in January 2020. Um, as noted by the public comments from Mr. Spidel of the Green Solution, a House bill passed that allowed for publicly traded companies, uh, in statute. Um, and so the Green Solution began contacting you all as well as us about, um, what could they do to reach this next, next level for their business? And then, um, uh, February 25th, Mayor, you gave us direction to bring this back. And so here we are. So really tonight, we are looking for, um, kind of two, two pieces of direction, direction. If you'd like us to bring back the proposed changes to next week's regular session, that's one part of the question. Um, and then we have a couple of future questions for you. So, um, with the two kinds of changes that are on the plate as ordinance changes for next week, uh, we'd be happy to take any questions about the cleanup, uh, items and we marked those for you as well as the, uh, ownership changes that were put in your packet. Otherwise, we don't really have a presentation.
My understanding is it's just going to follow the state for the most part, correct?
Correct. In terms of ownership, yes.
Correct. Councilmember Christensen? Susan, is there any way we can unmute Councilmember Chris? There she is.
I'm just, oh, okay. I'm sorry. Um, okay. I, uh, one of the things about the state, um, legalization of marijuana is that every city is allowed to make its own decision about this. And, um, I was the one who brought this forward in the first place because it seemed to me, well, I won't go into that. But anyway, I, I do think it's good to legalize marijuana across the state and across the United States. However, I, that said, um, I think that people need to be regulated. So I have two questions. Um, if we did this, first of all, I was told by Green Solutions in one of their many calls to me, um, that they are already regulated by the SEC. I want to know if that's true. Because to me, um, there's a grave danger in allowing them to, to, allowing us to have people come in, uh, who are multinationals and we don't get to fingerprint them or do background checks because it makes it difficult for them to do business. That isn't my concern. My concern is to protect the people of the city. Um, so are they actually regulated and checked on by the SEC? That's one question. And the other is, um, is Green Solutions located in the city of Longmont or are they in a county enclave? So I guess this is directed.
Mayor Bagley. Yeah. Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Christensen. Good questions. Um, I'll take the second one first and I'm going to look to Tim maybe for some help with the first one. Uh, Green Solution is in fact in city limits. They're in the old VFW building on South Main. So yes, they are one of our licensees. Um, with regard to your question about SEC regulation, I don't know that as much about it. I don't know if Tim does.
Yeah, I do know about that actually. So, um, they would be regulated by the SEC. It, it kind of depends on, um, where that publicly traded, um, business is, is located and where it's traded. Um, a number of them are traded on the Canadian market, um, on one of the Canadian markets. Um, but you, you're right, they are regulated by the SEC. They have pretty stringent financial, uh, background checks that they have to do and documentation. It's possible that this actually is a little bit more, uh, financial documentation when they're regulated by the SEC than they would have to provide as a self proprietor or just in honor of their business.
Okay. My, my, the state, well, I know, went through this, uh, checking on their regulation. My concern is, okay, the Canadians, we always think that the Canadians are just better than we are, but that doesn't necess, that's not necessarily true. And so what is to prevent a cartel from anywhere in the world, kind of using this to launder money or to gain a whole stranglehold on, um, there are various marijuana businesses in the country and just use various local guys, um, to be the front face of this while behind the scenes they're doing something nefarious. That's just my, my paranoid fantasy that I, I don't want to have happen in Longmont. I think we have poor businesses and I think they do a good job. And, um, but I also do see how, uh, mom and pop shops, mom and pop pot shops are kind of going the way of the dodo because it's really, they really do not make a pile of money. They really do not, uh, it's very difficult for them because of the banking situation. And I understand why they want to do this. It gives them a little more leeway. It gives them, um, a feasible way to move forward and still be involved with the business they started. Um, so what can you tell me about, uh, why my paranoid fantasy can't happen? Tim? Mr. Hall?
So I, I would say at one level, it's perhaps impossible to make sure what you described never happens, um, even the situation. Um, and some of the talk I've heard, it sounds like maybe that does happen some under the current or any of the previous, um, pre-publicly traded companies, uh, law. And the other thing I would say that the new, the new rules were pretty thoughtfully done, uh, to address issue in particular. Still is pretty rigorous, um, background checks that you have to do if you are an owner of greater than 10, of, of marijuana company, required to submit a, uh, request for finding of suitability, which is the backs, which is the fingerprints. Um, and so really the people who aren't look, being looked at are people who own, um, you know, 1% of the business, who own a 401K that owns court. This, um, it, but if you are going to be in a position where you can actually control that business, you're going to be required to submit a finding of suitability.
Yeah. Okay. I think we have to kind of have some faith in the, the SEC will function correctly. Um, all right. I understand.
Councilmember Peck?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. So I also had some of the questions that, uh, Councilwoman Christensen, Christensen had. So I called, uh, the co-signer of this bill, who happened to be, uh, Jonathan Singer and asked him some of these questions. Um, and the one about, uh, that Polly had about nefarious people or cartels, I asked, I asked him that and he said that there's a series of rigorous checks that is done by the state and the, to make sure that the dollars coming into the dispensary are legitimate. And, uh, they look at that very closely. The other reason that I hadn't thought of was that, um, and what turned, because he said that he actually voted against this the first time it came around. And then the second time he looked at it a bit differently. Um, one of the problems with a startup for dispensaries is that there is no bank that will loan to you. So some of the startup money that they want comes from public funding. They need to get an investor in order to get their business started. Um, so if we're looking just at small business startups, that's what really sold him because, um, but I do have a question for Dan. We have, is our local control, our local, uh, I guess, uh, codes, et cetera, that we put in for marijuana, will they still be intact? Will they still have to comply with those even though it's a publicly traded company? Do we have that control?
Is that a question for me?
Sure.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So we tried to be as narrowly focused with our changes as possible. Um, so what we did is, um, when looking at the code previously, we thought that the big obstacle for, uh, publicly traded companies was that, um, we required fingerprinting and background checks for all owners of the business. And so if you bought a single share of this publicly traded company, you'd have to submit a background check and fingerprint and you have to do that before buying your single share. Um, and so it wasn't practically feasible. So we narrowly tailored this change to focus mostly on when the state requires you to do a background check, that's when we are requiring you to do a background check. Otherwise, the rest of the changes are just to reflect that the, um, the state has collapsed its, uh, medical marijuana code and its retail marijuana code into a single code with a single set of rules. And so that's just updating the changes to reflect that. Otherwise, it's, it's pretty narrow. We try to be as narrow as possible.
So, so when does the state require a background checks and fingerprints? Is there some parameter or policy?
There, there is a policy. There is an administrative rule. I have it up. Um, it's, it's probably going to be too long for me to just read out. Um, when put into a single word document, it's about four pages, single spaced. Um, but it's administrative rule two dash two, three, five. Um, and the, the long and short of it, when we're looking at a publicly traded company is, are you owner of 10% or more of that publicly traded company? Or are you in some sort of managerial position, chief, the CEO, um, the C, the COO, the CFO? Those people need to submit to, to, to these background checks. Um, there's also some complications around, well, what happens when another entity owns 10% or more? Um, and it goes into, into a conversation about that. Um, and then there is, um, some other regulations around if you are a passive, um, interest in indirect beneficiary who suddenly finds themselves with 30%. Um, and so it, it is a bit complicated. Um, Dawn, I, I sent you that rule. Did that make it into the packet?
I did include, um, that in the packet, what you sent me. Yes. About controlling beneficial owners. Yes. It was an attachment.
That was the one with the, uh, little diagram in, in, inside of it.
Oh, okay.
And that goes into, um, when, when it triggers a requirement for a finding of suitability.
So, um, so Dan, my question to you is if we said okay to this, if we, uh, gave direction for staff to go forward, um, do you feel comfortable with that our city is protected under state law and our local control with these dispensaries? As an attorney?
That's for you, Tim.
Yeah, it was, it was for me.
Dan, shoot, I'm thinking of, never mind, Tim. Yeah.
I, I did, I did replace Dan. Um, so, so that's, I'm sitting in his office. So that's, that's fair. Um, that, that's a bit of a policy decision.
I know.
And so I don't want to step into that role.
Okay.
Much. I, I will say that, um, the rules were thoughtfully done. They were, in, in fact, just to clarify a little bit, this, this law was passed, um, mid-year 2019 and then they spent the rest of the year kind of having, uh, meetings and, and, and developing these, these rules around it. And so
Okay.
in like six months that they took developing the rules. So it only came into effect January. It was actually passed in the last session. So I thoughtfully done, but otherwise it's a bit of a policy decision.
Okay. I didn't want to put you on the spot, but I kind of did. So, thank you.
We appreciate you not making policy decisions. I know multiple people are thinking that. Councilmember Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Um, so I reviewed this, the red line at, at a lot of length and then sort of lost track of what the council direction was or what the, the staff direction was. So can we review that? Is this, do we need to give direction to go forward? Or if we don't raise any objections or call for any changes, does it just come back to us at a subsequent regular meeting and we can vote on it then?
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Martin, yes, our plan was proposed was to make to, and to allow you to chance to weigh in on the policy decision of whether or not to allow a publicly traded company. If you're comfortable, uh, Tim is already working on an ordinance so that we can be ready to get that in the packet for tomorrow to get it out to you. So we, we wanted to give you a chance to, uh, weigh the options before just presenting you with an ordinance.
Okay. So then if the ordinance is in progress and we've got at least a week to, um, think about it, then we can take this presentation or this verbal presentation, uh, with us and we still have a week to ask questions. Is that correct?
That's accurate. We'd bring it back on consent next week on the 14th. You'd certainly have a chance to make, uh, ask questions. Wake up, Mayor. Uh, ask questions and, and make any amendments.
Okay. Thank you. I'm satisfied then.
Councilmember Christensen? Polly, we can't hear you. You're not, you're, you're, there you go.
Oh, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right. Um, I would move that we approve the amendments as recommended to bring forth. Do I have a second?
Second. So it's been moved by Councilmember Christensen and seconded by me and also Dr. Waters. But, uh, let's go ahead and all in favor, say aye. Raise your hand.
Aye.
Opposed, raise your hand. All right. The motion passes unanimously. All right. That said, let's move on to Mayor and Council comments.
Mayor Bagley, sorry if I might interrupt before we move on. We also want a direction if, um, council would like us to bring back legislation to allow for, uh, delivery. You all asked us about that last week. Um, we wouldn't have that for next week, but for a future meeting, but we wanted that direction. Um, we also anticipate that the plant counts allowed for medical marijuana, we are now out of sync with statute. Wondered if you'd like us to bring that back as well. So we'd also like feedback on those if you'd like to give us feedback.
Councilmember?
Can you hear me? I can't hear you.
All right. I said, let's go with Mayor Pro-Tim Rodriguez.
Oh, okay.
Then we'll go with Councilmember Christensen and then we'll go with Councilmember Martin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Bagley. I think as
I think as it was noted in the packet, as well as I think previously mentioned, previously mentioned just a few minutes ago, that we'd expect a large amount of public involvement in the questions regarding number of plants as well as delivery, be it medical or recreation, which is slated for 2021. So I would move that we table that until we can have more robust public participation in the future.
Seconded. All right, it's been moved and seconded by, it was moved by Mayor Protem, and then it was seconded by Dr. Waters. All in favor, say aye.
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 Raise your hands.
We didn't have any.
Well, you guys want?
Discussion.
We didn't.
Discussion.
Let's discuss. Anyone want to say anything?
Yes.
But why? No, just kidding. All right, so I said, Councilmember Christensen, do you still want to say something? You were in the queue.
Never mind.
All right, Councilmember Martin, and then Councilmember Peck.
Okay. While I agree with Councilmember Rodriguez on the matter of the number of plants and regularizing that with the state and yada, yada. I think that with the stay-at-home order, the matter of delivery is something different. Because, first of all, it's a medical thing for some people. And they can't necessarily get to the dispensary. And the other thing is that even a lot of people who didn't bother to get a dispensary card after recreational use was legalized, they're essentially using recreational products for medicinal purposes. And so they're in sort of the same state. And it's not that different than the exception that has been made for delivering alcohol. So I wonder if we shouldn't at least put together a quick provisional ordinance that maybe we could reconsider when the COVID emergency is, is, is over, but to allow temporary deliveries during the, during the governor's stay-at-home order, which is likely to go on long enough to make it worthwhile for us to do it.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Actually, I would like to, I know that there's a motion on the floor, but I would actually like to split this into two different votes. We vote on the plant issue and, and what we want to do with that, table it or move it. And the delivery system, make these two separate votes. Because I would table the plant, but I want to vote on the delivery system. So how do I do that? We already have a motion on the table?
It's, it's actually, I believe you're making a point order that there's actually two issues in the same motion. So what we'll do is take it one at a time. And so Mayor Protem, which one do you want to take first?
I see it. Thank you, Mayor Bagley. I believe it'd probably be pertinent to do the easy one on plants first.
All right. So does anyone have any, I see, I see, I see the hands. So does anyone have any comments on the plant? So if the, if the motion were only regarding plants, did I see, let's go with Councilmember Martin, then we'll go with Councilmember Christensen.
I was just gonna, just trying to second the motion for plants only.
So seconded. Councilmember Christensen.
I would like to put off the issue of plants until a later date when, as Councilman Rodriguez said, we have more public input.
All right, is there any other discussion regarding tabling the issue of plants? Number of plants, et cetera? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. I saw you, Councilmember Christensen. I count it as an aye. Nay? All right, the motion passes unanimously. Let's go ahead and take the second motion, which was, Councilmember Peck, the issue of timing?
Yes.
So I'm assuming Councilmember Martin, you want to second that as well? All right, it's been moved and seconded. Let's talk about this. Mayor Protem Rodriguez, it's, you got the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. Just wanted to point out, I know it was somewhat mentioned by Councilmember Martin that folks that do not have medical cards but are using recreational cannabis for medical usage would possibly need the service too, but are ineligible to do so until 2021 per the House bill. And so that would not actually help them in any substantive manner. Outside of that, I'm not adverse to a provisional allowance during the COVID epidemic for medical delivery. I just was sensitive to the fact that we are trying to be prudent with the issues we bring before council and as far as public input is concerned. And that was my, my real concern with the matter.
Lots of hands are up. Councilmember Idago Ferring, your hand went up before, and then it didn't go up again. So did you have something to add?
So I just, I was, I wanted to concur with what Councilmember Martin had said about coming together with a provisional piece, at least getting us through the COVID crisis. And then we can look at something more long-term. So that was all I wanted to contribute to that piece.
All right, Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. So my understanding is that those without a medical card would not be eligible for delivery. Is that, is that case under the current law? So if that is the case, my question is, what's our obligation to regulate who actually participates in this in a legal way? Do we leave that on the dispensary to say, we will only deliver to a home, but we're going to check somebody's card, which now puts people in proximity to one another in ways that we're not comfortable with? I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this idea. I'm a little concerned about how it gets regulated and who's responsible to, we risk to make certain that people abide by the law. That's the question.
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Waters, just if I may. So you're correct. Recreational customers would not be able to participate in this if we did something provisional for medical marijuana cardholders. That, that regulation comes in in January 1st, 2021. So you're correct on that point. And I did want to say that there is quite a bit of information in state regulations about how to deliver. And we would look to that. We have not done full research on that yet. Tim has done some, and he, he's welcome to chime in on what the requirements are with delivery. We just weren't prepared for that, but we'd be happy to bring all of that back.
All right. Tim, were you going to say something?
Yeah, I did do some research. I haven't done a deep dive because it wasn't kind of teed up. I can tell you that there are not a lot of jurisdictions that have done this, so that there's not a lot of homework that we can copy. So as far as I'm aware, only Boulder allows delivery. And there's only one licensed delivery, one state licensed delivery business in the state.
Councilmember Christensen, and then Councilmember Martin.
I see what's happening. You're unmuting me, and I'm unmuting me, and then we're muted. All right, anyway. You know, I think that liquor stores and, I mean, you know, people think, oh, those crazy liquor stores, they'll sell to anybody. And same with marijuana, but in truth, they are very careful about selling only to people who are legal, because if they get in trouble, they can have their license taken away. And from what I have seen and spoken to marijuana store owners, they really do have a very stringent record of trying to keep track of treating medical marijuana differently from recreational marijuana. They're taxed very differently, and the costs are very different. So they really do have those things in place. So I would just say that I am, I am comfortable, Councilman Waters, with their ability to regulate themselves because they know that the repercussions, if they do not, are very, very severe. So I would be in support of us doing a provisional law, provisional ability to have home delivery for medical marijuana.
Councilmember Waters. Councilmember Martin, I'm, sorry, Doc. It's Councilmember Martin. She did this, which means, Bagley, you forgot I was in the queue, which is right. So Councilmember Martin, and then Dr. Waters.
Sorry. Yeah, I just wanted to ask whether we're, what the analogy is between what the government, governor did with alcohol delivery and what we're considering? Because we do have local statutes against even walking out with, you know, a paper container of, containing an alcoholic beverage out of, out of a restaurant now. But for the duration of the emergency, we are allowed to, you know, deliver mixed drinks to home with an order of food. So what would be the difference between that and allowing for the duration of the, of, of the emergency, delivering marijuana to anyone who is over 21?
Dr. Waters?
I don't know if that question was directed at me. And I don't know that I have an answer other than the fact that you don't have to differentiate between one 21-year-old and another 21-year-old if you're delivering alcohol. But you would between somebody with a card and without a card. But, but that's not my concern. We just, we just had a conversation about how we're going to enforce a stay-at-home order. We heard a question from one council member about how we're going to enforce this. And we then heard an overview about what's going to be civil and what's going to be legal. We heard from Harold that we're not seeing any fewer calls right now, even as we're adding to calls in terms of enforcement with, with a new set of expectations. And now we're going to add another layer or dimension of enforcement that is, that is kind of be the Wild West as far as it looks to me like. And, and if somebody wants me to vote to put one more set of obligations or responsibilities on our public safety, folks, given everything that else is going on, without the kind of clarity or answers to the questions that would come up about how you differentiate, I simply am not going to do it. I just don't think this is the time. I understand concerns about medical marijuana and one of people wanting to get access to that kind of treatment. But to do that right now with our public safety department, as unclear, at least as I am, with what regulation looks like, seems to me not to be a prudent move at this time.
Councilmember Martin. Actually, let's go with Councilmember Peck real quick, only because she hasn't spoken yet on this issue. And then we'll go back to you, Marcia.
Okay, I just, I did intend my question to be answered and not by Councilmember Waters, so.
Okay, does somebody want to answer the question? Harold, staff? I think we lost our attorney.
No, he's here.
Mayor Bagley, Councilmember Martin. Tim is also here as well. And he may be better poised to answer. Tim, you want to take a stab?
Sure, I'll step in. As far as I understood, I would loop back to what Councilmember Rodriguez said. Is the state law currently, does not allow retail marijuana to be delivered until 2021. And no executive order has attempted to change that. The current guidance that's coming out of the Marijuana Enforcement Division is that retail marijuana delivery will not happen until 2021. And so there is a state law that prohibits it. And so as far as I can tell, if I'm answering your question, the reason why you can only do medical and not just anybody who's over 21 is because state law prohibits retail marijuana being delivered.
Okay. And we couldn't have a statutory protocol for checking, like having somebody show their card through a window before leaving the delivery? That could be defined by an ordinance, correct?
May I clarify your question? Just to say.
Sure.
You're asking if somebody drove up to a retail marijuana store and, and wanted to purchase without having personal contact? Did they put up their card to a window?
I was actually suggesting that if they ordered it to be delivered, then when the delivery showed up, they could put their card to their own window so that the delivery person would see it. And we could define that process in, in our provisional ordinance.
So that's similar to what Boulder does. Boulder requires that you have designated that medical marijuana center as your primary caregiver previously. And they must have on hand all of your documentation. And then they will check your ID to the documentation that they had on file because they are your primary caregiver.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Peck.
Thank you. You're right, Tim. Actually, when my husband was ill, I got a medical license in order for him to use marijuana. And we were then, we had to get something from his primary caregiver to take to the dispensary. And then we were on file with that dispensary. So to Tim's question about who is going to enforce this, the dispensary, in fact, will enforce it by when you call in your order to make sure that you are a patient of that dispensary. I personally don't see how this is going to put any more onus on ours, police force, because they won't really be enforcing this. So I think it's a good idea. I just know from personal experience that if this happened when my husband was incredibly ill and we could not get that medical marijuana, and we had to go back to opioids, it would have been disastrous for us. So this is really important to the population that uses medical marijuana. It's, it's, it's important to get it out there, just like you have CVS delivery or Target's delivery or Walgreens medical delivery. So for me, this, this is something that we should absolutely do. And I would be voting for a provisional ordinance.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor Bagley. This is a question for the attorney. As noted earlier, there's only one jurisdiction in Boulder that you mentioned. And specifically, there's only one dispensary that's currently state licensed. Is that accurate?
To my knowledge, that's accurate. The state law requires that you prove that your local jurisdiction allows delivery before you can actually apply. And so I think that's stopping everything.
Do we know the name of the dispensary that currently has that license in Boulder?
Yes, if you give me one second, I can look it up.
Okay, so the point being is, A, if that dispensary also exists as a, as another entity here in Longmont, that probably make their licensure easier because I already know how to go through those steps. But it's obviously going to be a process for any of our four city-licensed dispensaries or city-permitted dispensaries to get this state license. And how much these different dispensaries want to go through that process is unclear at this time. And so it seems like the regulations are actually quite stringent, as is, be at the, at the state licensure level or the specific delivery, as well as how they deal with medical users. And I don't know if we have an answer yet, but.
I do have an answer. It's the dandelion, and I did know that they were not one of our licenses.
Right, right, yeah, I do know they're not one of our licensees either. So it seems like, not, not sure how long the process takes, but it's possible that we may be beyond a stay-at-home order by the time any potential dispensary could be granted a licensure at the state level anyhow. So I'm not, again, adverse to a provisional thing as long as we define what that period of time is before we take up an actual allowance of, of delivery services within the city of Longmont. So as long as they're prescriptive. So as long as we're prescriptives, as far as whether it's during the stay-at-home order or whether it's during the time that we're not allowed to go to restaurants and bars, for instance, I'm not sure what that would entail either. I mean, this is a pretty, I think, in-depth conversation, and I think does require some public input as well. So I'm not quite sure where we're at on this.
Councilmember Idago Ferring?
So I was looking up, and this one, I guess, would be for Tim, the attorney. The town of Superior, they passed an ordinance? Is that, is there a way that we can look and see how they rolled that out and how they dealt with some of the issues we're discussing right now?
If they have just passed an ordinance, we can look at the ordinance. I'm not, I'm not aware that they have done that yet, but that's mostly because I haven't done a deep dive yet on this issue.
Okay, I can email you what I have, if you want to put your email in the chat box.
Although, yeah, I guess it wouldn't matter. It's a city email. You can say anything that goes in that chat box is public. So just everybody remember when you're broadcasting, everybody can see what you're writing. All right, anything else? There's a motion on the table, basically waiting to suspend this issue as well, to table it, correct? So all in favor, say aye.
Tell us, what is the aye vote here?
The aye vote is to table the issue of, of timing until a later occasion. I mean, like the home delivery, et cetera, not plants, but timing. So. Councilmember Martin seconded it. I mean, I asked her for a second and she went like this, so I'm assuming she seconded it. So all in favor, raise your hands. An aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All right, Paula, you abstained, right? Are you an aye or a nay?
I'm a nay.
All right, so the motion fails. Four to three, or three to four, with Mayor Potem Rodriguez, myself, and Dr. Waters, four, and then Councilmember Martin, Councilmember Peck, Councilmember Idago Ferring, and Councilmember Christensen, against. So we will continue discussing that at the next meeting. Councilmember Martin, give them the comment.
I'd just like to suggest that in our direction to continue discussing this at the next meeting, we should allow the city attorney's office to come back after a more thorough discussion of the state statutes. Say, yeah, bring back an ordinance if you can to do it during the stay-at-home order. But if you can't, then tell us and tell us why. Because I, while I think this is important for many people, I do also understand that we, this may be too complex an issue to address with everything else that the staff has to deal with. So, you know, let's give it the college try, but let's not make it an essential thing. The other thing that I wanted to ask is what the state of the law right now is in terms of pickup orders of medicinal marijuana prescriptions. Can, does, does the cardholder have to be the one who picks up the order to take away? Or can it be anybody who is designated by the cardholder?
Mayor Bagley and Councilmember Martin, just to answer, we hear you loud and clear. I think Tim and I will gather tomorrow and see what information we can gather in time, see if we can be ready for next Tuesday to have enough information or not. If not, we will bring that back as quickly as feasible. Tim's time is obviously the harder one to manage at this point in the game. So I think we've got that direction. We hear you on that. And the, in order to pick up orders, I believe it must be the cardholder and perhaps a designated party, but they would have to show ID. It would have to be something in their, in their record, I believe.
Yeah, so the question that I had obviously was, was would it have worked for Bob Peck? If there was a designee in advance, it would.
I believe so. I believe you could designate for this purpose, but again, everybody has to show their ID. They have to be checked in, in the metric system before anything is dispensed.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Waters?
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. If we're going to bring this back at the next meeting, it would, it's going to help me to be clear on what are the implications, both on the, in terms of regulations or enforcement. So if I'm, if I'm, if I'm way off base, if our public safety folks say, look, this is a piece of cake, it's not going to, it's not going to create a, add to the growing serious responsibilities we're expecting of them, especially the longer this, this stay-at-home order goes on, then I'd like to know that. If I'm, if I'm misreading what the implications are, number one. Number two, I'd like to have some idea of what the implications are in the city attorney's office. Because it's one thing to do the cleanup, that was pretty straightforward. This feels like it's a different beast in terms of drafting an ordinance. And I don't know what's on the plate for Eugene and Tim and his whole staff. But right now, in this period of time, given everything else that's on the plate of our top-level city staff, to expect if this is going to be, this is going to take fair amount of time and creativity to craft an ordinance, I just have to wonder why is this, I get during the stay-at-home order, we'd like to, you know, make it easy for people to get access. But the state licensing is an issue. I still would like to know that enforcement is not going to be an issue. But to add this now, at this time, to the city attorney's office, I just have to wonder. So I'd like to know what's going to move off the agenda if we're going to add this to the agenda for this city attorney. And you have to answer that now, but if we're going to talk about it next week, I'd like to know the answers then.
And unfortunately, we've already taken a vote, and four of us, four of them, four of us decided to go forward. I was also, however, just in general, moving forward as we're looking at issues. Whenever I stop by the Emergency Operations Center, Harold's always there. I know that our, I know that city staff right now is completely absorbed, as they should be, with the current situation. So as we ask things of staff, I will continue to ask Harold and Eugene, is this going to put any pressure whatsoever on, on you two?
So Mayor and Council, Eugene May, city attorney here. I think it's unrealistic to get this item prepared for next week. The packet was supposed to go out today for next week. If you want quality work to be done, we need more time.
So if we were, so the motion was to move forward, not to table. We did not set a deadline. So if we were to ask you to impose, if we were to ask you to impose a deadline that would give you ample room, given the current emergency of our town and the nation, what was, what would your response be? Do you want to think about it and get back to us on Tuesday?
We could do that, you know. I'd say at the earliest April 28th. That gives us basically two weeks to work it up. Or May 5th.
All right, well, why don't, why don't we do this on Tuesday? Can you just let us know what your target date is? And then we can, we can either accept or reject it, but it'll give you a week to decide. But Councilmember Martin?
Yeah, I think maybe it's even simpler than that, since it becomes much less imperative when the stay-at-home order ends. So I don't really see a need to put a deadline on it, you know, other than giving it the priority that we would give to something that we know is causing people suffering or has the potential to cause people suffering because it's not in place. And it's only because of that that I support looking at it at this time at all. You'll be fairly daunted when you see my list of all of the things that I didn't bring up during the stay-at-home order, because it's there. But, you know, I think, back into the feasibility of it, you know, do nothing more than a feasibility report for next week unless it turns out to just fall out and be dead easy. But the whole request goes away if, if the stay-at-home order is ended. I would expect that for a couple of months, but.
Yeah, yeah, that, I was going to say that as much as I'd like it to be lifted, we'll just have to see because nobody knows. And right now, as much as I would like to comply immediately with the wishes of four of us and have this done, I think it's also just, we're hearing from Eugene that it's a little unrealistic. And obviously, I mean, unprecedented situation to use Councilmember Idago Ferring's words. And I just, I just think they should be focused on that. But we'll get an update next week. And we'll, we'll hear from Eugene then. Councilmember Peck?
So I don't think that there should be a deadline on this. I don't remember especially asking for one. So whatever staff puts as the deadline or when they think they can bring it back, as far as I'm concerned, is good for me. I would like staff to set the precedent on when they can bring this back.
All right, do we have consensus on that? Anyone opposed to that idea? All right, Eugene, you have consensus to just do it, but in your own timeframe and keep us safe, okay?
Mayor? Mayor? What I was going to say, and part of I think where Eugene's struggling is he just doesn't know what questions we're going to dump into the system. And, and we dump questions in every day based on what we're dealing with. I think that's part of the struggle in timing and understanding what's on the plate.
Well, that, that, I mean, I think the consensus view is do what you need to, including, I mean, obviously, if you're getting asked constantly about constitutional issues and orders, and I can't even imagine your life right now, so take that into account, you know, that, I mean, that takes, that's first in line at all times. And I think I speak for counsel on that, so.
Thank you, Mayor. We got direction.
All right, cool. All right, let's go ahead and move on to council comments. Anybody? All right, we'll just take it one at a time, screen left to right as my screen appears. We'll go with Councilmember Christensen.
Okay, I, this is, this is directed to the people of Longmont. I implore you to practice physical distancing. And I implore you to cover your faces. These are the two things that people have done from the pandemic of 1918, in which my grandfather died, to any of, if you look, if you look around the world, these are the two practices everyone is doing, and they work. Where people don't do these, we have skyrocketing problems. We can only deal with what we have. We have a an appalling lack of preparation for this. We have an appalling lack of ventilators, of personal protective equipment, of tests. We can't individually and in Longmont deal with that. But what we can have control over is the amount of interaction we have with other people. And the universal masking, which is not going to help you from getting it, but it will keep you from spreading it. Since none of us know whether we have it or not, we should all presume that we may be carrying some variation of it. And for people out there who have just been going through cancer treatments or have diabetes or have any number of things that compromise their respiratory systems or their immunity, this is what we're doing it for. Cover your face. Universal masking is what people have been doing all over Asia. And it works. Please, please do this. And parents, please explain to your teenagers, even though, of course, that is a useless plea, but teenagers will never, never listen to us because what the hell would be. But please explain that they are not immune to this. Everyone can get this. And we have to do this for a little bit longer. It's frustrating, but it's what we have to do. So this will end and we will all, we will, we will survive this. But you have to do this for a while longer, or we will never be able to get a handle on this. So I just plead with you. You can make a mask. There's a no-fault, no-sew mask online that you can make for yourself. Couple of rubber bands and a cloth scarf. That's okay. If you put a coffee filter in it. There are many, many things that you can do. And what I have been most heartened by is the amount of, the number of people who are doing all kinds of things, each in their own weird way, to contribute and to help this be a better and a stronger community. So please keep with that. Consider going out at eight o'clock at night, every night, and howling at the moon because it's one way of showing solidarity. Thanks.
All right, good comments. Thank you, council member. Oh, I was going to go left to right, but everything's switched. We'll go with Dr. Waters.
Thanks, Mayor Bagley. This afternoon, we all got a draft of a letter that I suppose Sandy Cedar drafted it to the governor and legislators reflecting direction we gave last week to express our support of working families. Sandy, in that, in her correspondence with us, asked if there was any guidance we wanted to provide. Personally, I look at it and think she did a terrific job or whoever drafted it, if it wasn't Sandy. And, and I'd like for us to, for whatever, however we need to do it, to say, please proceed. I don't know, Mayor Bagley, if you would sign this on our behalf, it's going to be probably impossible for us to all get in to put signatures on it, but it's, it's from, respectfully, from the Longmont City Council. If the mayor could sign that and we could get it moving, I think at least it closes the loop in expressing our, our support and concerns for our working families.
Anybody opposed to me signing that? Speak up now. All right, we have consensus, so can we just get that on my desk and I'll sign it as soon as possible? Don?
Absolutely, Mayor.
All right, cool. That it? Doc? All right, Mayor Potem, was your hand up? All right, Councilmember Martin, was your hand up? Councilmember Peck, was your hand up?
I just want to give a shout out to my friend who has an online clothing company. She is donating what she calls gaiters, which skiers wear around their neck and they pull up over their mouth and nose. She is donating those to the homeless shelters for the homeless to use and wear since they don't have access to masks. And I also want to give a shout out to Hope for providing day shelters at Faith Baptist in the Journey. Because if you have to shelter in place, you can't do that unless you have a place to shelter. So during this virus, they're going to be using that. And I think that it's just a great, great response, a great action on the part of our community to come together and make sure that we're taking care of everybody. Thank you.
If you could read lips, that was Councilmember Idago Ferring.
So can you hear me now? Okay, so a couple of things I wanted to point out. You know, with school being closed, a lot of our, the cases, even though the cases of reporting for child abuse and neglect have gone down, it doesn't mean it's not happening. So, you know, be mindful of your neighbors. Check in on one another. The National Domestic Violence Hotline, 1-800-799-7233 is a good place to call for support, as well as the Colorado Child Abuse and Neglect Hotline, 1-844-CO4KIDS. And also to your own mental health and the mental health of your families. ColoradoCrisisServices.org is a good resource. Also Mental Health Partners, the MHPColorado.org, and Mental Health Colorado. I get a lot of information and resources from them. They're great. of information and resources from them. They're a great organization, and that's mentalhealthcolorado.org. So take care of yourselves. That's what I have to say. Good night.
I just want, thank you. I just wanted to say that, just remind everybody who's watching, that none of us have ever been in an elected office or position during a pandemic of this nature before. And all I know is that we're facing unimaginable issues, meaning a year ago, none of us expected anything like this could be happening. We're dealing with the virus, medical supply shortages, hospital shortages. We're dealing with, even worse, we're dealing with the fear and the possibility of such shortages. So we don't know exactly what's coming down the road. We're dealing with economic loss. We're dealing with homelessness. We're dealing with all the health consequences of the economic impacts. And so as we're, on one hand, we've got a lot of issues we're dealing with, but I just want to express my gratitude to staff. I alluded that Harold's always in there, so Sandy Cedar, so is, I always see Deputy Commander Satter. And, you know, I just look at the staff, and I remember the flooding back in 2013, and was so impressed with that. And that only lasted, I mean, a couple of days, and then the cleanup started. But being in such a heightened state of emergency, and just dealing with constantly changing issues, and emotion, and fear, and demands, and lack of resources, just want to say how impressed I have been, Harold, at your demeanor, your dedication, your cool head. And we're lucky to have you. So what that translates into, what all that translates to for me, is I'm looking at your staff, is as we struggle, and we debate, and we try to get our heads around all the issues that we're going to be facing, on one hand, we're going to have to confront those brutal facts. But on the other hand, I just have an unwavering faith that we're going to get through this just fine. And so it's just going to take a little effort, or a lot of effort. But we know that the world is on your shoulders, and we just really appreciate your efforts. That's all I wanted to say. So do you have the resources from us that you need, Harold?
I do. We're going to be reaching out to you for some communications, our elected officials, regarding some of these programs. So I just appreciate council support. Thanks for the words. We get great folks all over the organization. In times like this, it's actually easier to move through, when you have great people all over the place. And I just want to say, there's folks all over doing phenomenal work, from parks employees, and the water employees, and public safety employees, who are just continuing to do what they do, just more added to them, and having to be cautious or mindful of a lot of things. So great organization. And as I've said, as we run through this, that's at the forefront of my mind on a daily basis.
All right, well, just know we love you and we support you. Anything you need, let us know. All right, thanks.
We'll do that.
All right. So speaking of which, you got anything to say? Any managerial last-minute words?
No comments, Mayor Council, other than we'll be communicating with you as things change.
All right. Eugene, anything else from you?
No comments, Mayor.
Great, then we are adjourned. We'll go over, and we'll meet at the, we're going out to eat after this, right?